Let us pray. God of the universe, God of the past, God of the present, and God of the future, we thank you for the gift of today, for this time, as this council in Perry is gathering for prayer, also to discern, to plant, to visualize, and to make some decisions that will impact the surrounding communities. Thank you for acknowledging that we are your children, and thank you for the gift and the opportunity to pray to you, that you may continue guiding us so that our decisions, so that the conversations, the presentation of different opinions and points of view might be taken with mercy and also with wisdom. We pray for the families here in Perry and in the surrounding communities, those families that will come through the city, the town, and those who will be traveling and will bring business to the area. We pray for all of them, for their well-being, for their good health, and for the time of sharing with their families. Thank you for blessing this evening. We are in your hands. In Christ we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Ray. Welcome to the meeting. Let's begin now at 7:01 with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call, Devon. Randy Coffey.
Here.
Mike Conne. Mindy Galvillian. Here. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Sam Ammon. Here. All the conference, except Mike Conne. Mike did let us know ahead of time that he was not commable to be here tonight due to footlogging, not that he's playing, but that he's coaching.
In Springfield.
In Springfield, yes. And now we move to approval of the agenda.
I move the agenda to be adopted as printed.
Second.
I moved and seconded the agenda to be adopted as printed. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay, motion passes. And moving on in the agenda to the reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the August 5th, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
Then moved and seconded that we... I'm sorry, who's going to take the second? It was Larry. I'm sorry. Larry's for her. I'm sorry. I should have said that. My apologies. Thank you. All those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay, motion passes. To pre-approved reports and presentations, Steve, you're on.
Who wants it?
Nobody's here, so are they?
Do we want to hold off and see if they show up?
Shall we wait a bit and see if they come?
Yes.
We're going to move ahead, passing by the Perry's Pride Award. For now, we'll come back to that when our award winners arrive. Moving into public comment, then, do we have anyone here tonight for public comment? I guess we do not. Moving on then to communications. Devon, do you have any communications to share? So she has no communications to share, but I do have a few, so we'll move into the mayor reports. We have received an email and a phone call from Glenn Flewelling of Kentucky Fried Chicken, and he said, please tell everyone in the city and beyond that we are opening. They're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony at 10:00 AM or approximately 9:30 to 10:00 on August 31st, and they'll have a lot of events going on, games, free food, radio, and the parking lot. So everybody come and wish them well, finally able to open. They had been delayed for many of the reasons that floated around the rumor mill, but lately they had trouble getting their supplies shipped to them, but now they hope to open on the 31st. Just to let you know, too, kind of an update, we did get a contract from the new website Shoemakers that you guys approved that has been signed and sent back, so we'll be moving forward on that. We also have received the contract from the service line marketing agreement, the other item that we've been discussing for a while that was approved, so that has been also signed and sent back. In regard to the petition to change the city charter regarding the moratorium on medical marijuana, that was approved. It was sent out to the attorney. That's been sent to the Attorney General's office. We've gotten communication back from them, but it has been approved to go on ballot this fall, so it will be on the ballot. I think that's all I have. Devon, do I have anything else?
These were just updates.
Yeah.
Unless you had something else to add?
No, I think that's it. Because Mindy's here, so Mindy, do you want to give us a personnel committee report?
We have a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, we do.
So first of all, we had our interview for an assessor, Eileen Stad, and we'd like to recommend that she be approved to be our assessor. She's got 25 years of experience and now serves Venice and Bangton Township and comes highly recommended from our previous assessor, Mr. Schweiger. And then we redid our job evaluation recommendations, and that should be in front of you. And we also worked on the political activities for employees, which we'll be discussing later, too.
Right. We do have under old business the items that she just mentioned. We have under new business, I'm in appointment for Eileen, but if it's okay with council, we can move that appointment up so that Eileen doesn't have to hang around here all night here, all this boring stuff. So if that is okay, does anybody have an objection to moving that appointment up? Okay. Do you have any questions for Eileen, anyone on the council? I know some of you on the personnel committee have already met her and questioned her, but anybody else, Steve or Bob?
You've worked with Steve Schweiger?
Well, he's an assessor and I'm an assessor. We haven't really worked together, but we know each other for quite some time.
Steve is who recommended Eileen to us, yes. He brought her in and introduced us.
You might want to add to that, Mayor, is Steve recommended her, and he has also been gradually retiring. You're fortunate enough to see him, you know, when he still had him, and Eileen has been recommended by a couple of his that he let go, so if it's not the first that he's let go and asked Eileen, she would like to stand up and take them on, so.
Anybody else have questions for her? Well, then I would move forward in the appointment, again, just so she can go and not have to hang out here. If council would move on in their recommendations for resolutions to the new business section, I would need a motion from someone in regard to that appointment.
I move that we accept and approve Eileen Stad as the new city assessor effective October 1st, 2021.
Second.
Steve moved by Mindy, seconded by Steve, that we accept and approve Eileen Stad as the new city assessor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay, motion passes. Welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to having you with us. So you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to go.
Okay.
It will not be a black market issue. And then back to committee reports. Do we have any other committee reports?
I'll just give a quick update on the Finance and Ordinance Committee. We did have a meeting since council met last, and we are moving forward with some preliminary discussions on the codified ordinances now that we've got things moving forward on enforcement on the zoning ordinance. We're going to be focusing on two specific ordinances to begin with because we're not going to take on the whole group once. Basically, we're starting focus on Chapter 678 and 696 that deal with safety and health conditions in the city and junk vehicles, which are high on the list of the kinds of complaints that Sue and the rest of the office have been receiving over the last few months. So we said, let's start with those. And we're also going to look at tailoring what we reviewed last meeting in terms of enforcement around zoning ordinance and see if we can tailor that to be similarly applied to the codified ordinances. And we'll be meeting again this coming Monday to continue that discussion and activity. So more to follow.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Park, do you have anything?
Nothing new from last week, my last meeting.
Okay, then, moving on. Presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Bob to approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay, motion passes. Okay, under old business, our first item for discussion and possible action is regarding the policy that addresses employee participation in political activities. Now, that is, has been discussed by the personnel committee. Mindy is on that committee, Mike was not here, Randy. So if you have any questions about the proposed changes in regard to that, they, and I sit in on that committee, are here to be happy to answer any of those questions you might have.
The packet that you received tonight is a hard packet. I tried to make it easy for you so you didn't have to sort through and find the different things. So you have the personnel committee's recommendation, and then behind it, the actual original policy, so that you can see the difference, okay?
That's one that was emailed to us, correct?
I just emailed the whole...
I printed out my email, yeah.
The whole policy you guys had, yes. And then there was amendments that was emailed and I'll leave it.
I think you guys are going to have it personally, so.
We have this help.
It took us a half hour.
Well, it's hard on little things.
Yeah, we did, we did.
We wish you did. Any other comments or questions?
Answer's the question for Devon. I know you had some concerns about the old policy. Does this ally those concerns that you had?
Personnel committee was very easy to work with. A lot of this stuff, I said, I don't really have a problem because we were already following it anyways. A lot of it was common sense that was put in here, and then there was some of it that, to me, just tinkered the line of kind of on the strict side. So, yeah, I think I agree with everything that they said and did, that it's not hard to follow because you know.
We did have a lot of discussions about that went on the first, last time, that we all kind of rethought a little bit and talked it out, but we talked between ourselves, plus we had Johanne down here, and so we had a lot of voice in it and just thinking stuff out.
I was fine with it. I just wanted to get some reading.
No, but I meant the meeting went very well. We actually brought some other stuff, so it was very nice.
Well, if that concludes our discussion, there is a proposed resolution under old business if anybody's interested in making that.
I move that we amend the proposed employee participation in political activities policy as recommended by the personnel committee, effective immediately.
Second. Then moved by Larry and seconded by Mindy to amend this employee participation in political activities policy as recommended by the personnel committee, effective immediately. All those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Moving on then to the next item, which was also assigned to the personnel committee, and that's in regard to discussion with possible approval of amendments to the personnel policy. And most of those amendments, as Mindy said earlier, are in regard to the process of the annual evaluation, how that's done, what forms will be used, what process, how that will happen, what the process would be if there is, if the employee protests their evaluation, how that would be addressed. Then there's also a revision recommendation regarding, again, the process in particular of an objection to a reprimand, so that's also for disciplinary action and discharge. And is there discussion regarding that? I think you all have copies of that.
So again, you've got the recommendation from the personnel committee, and then you have the whole policy that is in effect right now. If you want to see the differences in the middle?
I do want to thank all of the council for pointing some things out to us that made us rethink this because I think what we've got now is going to be a lot more comfortable for everyone involved.
I think you're right.
Appreciate your input from you guys.
Your name came up, examples you guys gave about, you said, do yours at your work, yours at your work? Yeah. Yeah, I read through this. I think you guys did all the right things.
I agree, Bob. Did a great job.
Well, we definitely want everyone to be comfortable that has the evaluations and gives the evaluations and like that. And we did talk about your suggestion about including the total cost on the compensation sheet, but it was felt that it might get kind of complicated, and I'm not going to be able to explain as well as you could. What did you say about possibly being negative for us if we put up amounts that they would receive for their vacation time?
On the compensation?
Like that, on the compensation sheets. Do you remember?
Yeah. It was like... I think it would be confusing because it's part of the wage anyways, especially on the salary part of it. It's not going over and beyond, but if you acknowledge that they get it, it should be sufficient because we're showing their overall salary.
Yes, that's valid, and I do understand that. I work for numbers all the time, so.
It was a good idea.
The actual true cost of the employee to the employer.
So the true cost is on top, and then what I did is I just identified that they do what they receive, and not everybody receives the same thing.
Correct.
So she laughed at me. She's like, that's pretty impressive, because I opened my drawer and I had another table. Several different places I had to look to get that information, and hopefully, once now I've established, it won't be as complicated going forward.
Is that number, is there like a total number though at the bottom of actual dollars? What employee?
I didn't bring...
I didn't know.
I can explain it if I see it, but it's...
Right. Well, I just wondered in that tool at the bottom if you add in those calories.
I have everything with the Excel to calculate.
I'm guessing it does.
So yes, this is their whole package on the bottom, so it all...
So they have the numbers in.
It's going in, yep.
That also had work discount in there and that kind of stuff, which is expensive to the company or the employer, but it's not, believe me, you don't want to go work discount, but it doesn't benefit the employee. So it was, when I looked through that and they saw this, they think, wait a minute, that's not a benefit. Oh, I understand what they're doing. Some people may not understand that.
And that's easy to take off.
No, that's a...
But I thought, what I heard you say is you wanted to show the employee what the employer pays for you to be here, and so I took every single item. So maybe it was dramatic with a couple of those things, but...
No, I think it's appropriate.
But, I mean, because I get what you're saying.
Vacation time, the number of days they have is there, but the dollar amount for that is not there because those fall off after a certain amount of time, so to try to keep plugging those back in it dollar-wise just to...
Did you need to see that?
I just didn't know it was that way, what you were saying.
I think I started this when we were back first talking about healthcare costs and trying to get employees to understand that there's a lot more that goes into the cost of their benefits than just when they take over paycheck.
I think we just forget that, you know? Just don't think about that.
So the recommendation, for example, does say that that sheet, along with then maybe Bob or Steve said, do they do a self-evaluation sheet? And we said, no, they don't. And we discussed that, that's a good idea, so that will become part of their annual evaluation. Those will be given to them ahead of time, then they'll bring those to the evaluation. Everything will be gone over, and then they get copies of everything, and then the process, if they dispute that, is spelled out as to how they would go about seeking a new.
During the last meeting, I had a lot of concerns, and gathered personnel committee was very open and lots of discussion, and this is what I can see positive. I was confused at the last meeting, and this is very positive. I just wanted to hear. It's just offers, offers a process in a situation.
Like you guys said, we're not, we weren't planning in and out. I think you said it a few times, so we got a plan for the future, too, so all of us might not be sitting here, and we're trying to write it for everybody else, so that'd be fair.
That meant a lot to me.
If we have no further discussion, then looking for a motion, if we are going to approve it as it's written, we don't need to read the whole thing because it's just a policy, not an ordinance. If, though, you're recommending any changes, then we'll need to make those changes and then read the whole thing to make sure everybody understands, which we can do. We have lots of time, so.
Well, then I'll move that we approve the recommended amendments from the personnel committee to the personnel policy for the city of Perry employees, except for those covered by a master contract, which is negotiated with a recognized union or labor group, and with the understanding that this policy will be in effect September 1, 2021.
Do we have a second to that motion? Mindy? It's been moved by Steve and seconded by Mindy, as you heard him read that. All those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed with nay, motion passes. Thank you for that, all that personnel committee, that was a lot.
You were pretty cute.
Yeah.
You were there, too.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for the thing. Okie doke. Next on our agenda, possible adoption of zoning ordinance amendment number 354. Larry, do you have anything to say about this?
I think we went through the reading last time. Does anybody have any questions concerning the plan that we have as we discussed the last time? We're going to start with basically a verbal awareness followed by a written notice, and unfortunately, if neither of those are effective, then we will move into litigation, or at least municipal civil infraction, I should say, would be the next step. Hopefully, we don't have to get there very often, but at least it will provide our zoning administrator, Leland Scott, some additional teeth, if you will, to move forward, and we're appropriate in our zoning ordinance activities.
And I really, before we go any further, I just want to say thank you so much to this ordinance committee. The personnel committee has done a lot of work, but the ordinance committee has been addressing two or three things right in a row here that are huge. But Leland Scott, our zoning administrator, had come to me not long after I took office and had a folder and all written up and said, I can't do my job. I can only take it so far, and then I can't do anything. And I said, well, I don't really understand what you're saying, but let me figure it out. So going, coming here, going to the zoning or to the ordinance committee, they have spent a lot of time working on this. Certainly, if there are things we still need to address, they're available to do that, but they've done a lot with that, and I think Leland is very pleased that we, as a council, heard him. So thank you for that.
Well, Larry has been instrumental.
Yes.
In getting this together, he's very good at this.
I do think what you say, taking that to the next one.
This one is small by comparison. It takes a lot.
Everything is...
The codified ordinance is... We've got a pattern, hopefully, at least in Springfield.
That makes a huge difference.
How that we understand some of our obligations with some input for our city attorney, Justin English, along the way as well. Because it did become more complicated than we originally had anticipated, and I think with his guidance, we got through that hurdle.
I agree.
Any other comments or questions?
I move the ordinance 354, which amends zoning ordinance regarding violation enforcement, which was read at the August 5th, 2021 regular council meeting, be adopted. I'll second.
So it moved by Larry and seconded by Randy that the ordinance 354, which amends zoning ordinance regarding violation enforcement, and which was read at the August 5th, 2021 regular council meeting, be adopted. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed with nay, motion passes. Yay. Okay, we're still waiting on our award winners, but I forgot to give one of my little requests for my sticky note here during mayor reports, so let me just say during this, any other business that may come before council. Billy Roback came in today just a... Billy Roback came in today just on a Twitter about the appearance of the inside of the McQueen House. The painting is more than half done and just very pleased with all that. And he would love it if council members would come and see the inside of the McQueen House. He asked me to give you his number, so I'm going to. It is 575-499-6213. Please give him a call and he would be delighted to show you the McQueen House inside.
He reached me at the diner and said, well, okay.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I do want to see it.
Yes.
It's been a long, the last time I seen it, I think it was the first year.
Oh, really? Oh, well, you, yeah, that was a couple of years ago, so, yeah. Mindy, Mindy has been in and I have been in.
My sense of it was all the way done, though, so I have to get up there.
Outside looks great with the tree trimming and everything.
Yes, yeah, they have taken down that mulberry tree that was split down the middle. They did have the rototiller come and work up the ground around the outside as was requested. Now that's all planted to grass. And they have redone the flower beds so that in the spring, the, I forget who, it seems to be a school group, the garden club and then somebody else, Girl Scouts or a school group, somebody comes and plants flowers. What is it, Girl Scouts, okay? Girl Scouts, will plant flowers in those flower beds. But yes, the inside looks nice. He said today that they are on track to be able to host Santa and Mrs. Claus there during the Christmas. Fantasy, yes. And we hope to have fireworks that night, too, so that will be a fun thing. Any other business that may come before council? Any council discussions and observations? Yeah, do you want to report?
I will read, I will read the winners.
Okay.
Maybe they can stop by and pick up their prize.
Sure.
For August 2021, the Perry Pride winner is Scott and Randy Selby, 605 Clearwater. Honorable mentions, Thomas and Rebecca Sanford, Karen DiCarlo and Jeremiah and Christian Sayer. And these were the Perry Lakes area of the city.
Put your best face forward winner, ask.
Pardon?
Put your best face forward winner was?
That was Lori Loves Pets, 122 South Main Street.
Wonderful, thank you for that, Steve. We always recognize in our Perry Pride winners and honorable mentions, people that have made the outside of their homes especially attractive and bring pride to the city. And then the business gets the Put Your Best Face Forward Award. And we do that, is that every month or every other?
Every one of the.
Summer, September.
Yeah, May of, October. There we go. So thank you for that. Council members each have a separate section of town and they choose those awards for them. Thank you, Steve. So now, do we have any council discussions and observations? If not, this is on track to be our shortest meeting yet.
Thank you.
I don't want to make it too long, but I do have just a quick question. And I mentioned to Devon beforehand, I've come up a couple of things that struck my attention most recently. Question is to whether or not that there's any interest in approaching the CISA board or the fire department and offering CPR training for residents in surrounding area. I'm not sure if this, Devon said it may have been done a long time ago. I can certainly make contact, but whether or not there's any appetite for it. Where I first became aware of it is on the Perry community page. There's a lot of questions and stuff there, but this happened to be one that somebody new to the area was asking, where could, where could I go for some CPR training? And I go, years ago, my wife and I lived, took it through the DeWitt Fire Department at that time when we were residents there. So I'm just looking to see whether or not there's any interest or energy in seeing whether or not, even if there was a small fee involved to offset the cost, it might be a nice service to offer to people.
I can almost guarantee that, we do it once a year. We got to get free certified. And we invite people in there, they need to, we've got electricians that come in because they got to have it every year in there. So that's a possibility, but also we can follow up on it and see if they want to go to special class or through just the American Red Cross. I mean, I don't know if they do them on site down at Lansing or what, so. Yeah, we can follow up on it.
Yeah, that would, that would be great if, do you, do you want to do that?
I can ask, yeah.
Get back to Larry about that.
I'd like to be outside here, Randy, it was just, like I say, I think it would be.
I know we do at least once, but I mean.
A great community service that not everybody takes advantage of it, but I think we'd have enough people, I would.
Right.
Yet we'll see something else, someplace.
It's a very informative place to take, I mean, I'm not sure you guys take it down.
We do every year, we have to take it.
Chants usually live on the stomach for us here.
Does it?
In the past, but there hasn't been one done here in a long time, is what I told Lori.
And you'd be amazed when it comes to that moment when you need it. It's something great to have your back by it.
Yeah.
So, and it's pretty easy now, a lot of stuff has changed, actually, so. Since last time you guys did it, a lot more, a lot more pumping and less breath. So, but yeah, it's a lot more, a lot simpler now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can do it.
Do we have to do it with our mask on?
Got away from that part a little bit.
At least Annie doesn't have germs, right?
Right.
Anything else? I think we are set then. At 7:35, this meeting is adjourned.